Coming to this. This one's meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. I'm Anthony Moan. I'm the chair. I'll take attendance. Barbara Higbee, Suzanne Spellin, Roddy Yagan. I see you're on the Zoom, so if you can just unmute yourself.
Hey, can you hear me? There we go. I'm here. Roddy Yagan here.
All right, and I believe Sarah Winger is going to be joining us remotely as well, although I don't think she's on yet.
So, yeah, I don't believe she's on.
Okay, well, that's a quorum, so we'll proceed. First item is just to confirm last month's minutes. Do we have a motion? Oh.
Four minutes distributed? From last?
Yeah, from the last meeting.
Okay.
We'll have to postpone that.
Yeah, we'll postpone that until next month. We'll confirm that with March's minutes. Sarah Winger, I do see has joined. By Zoom.
I don't know which you guys prefer. I can do this, or I can do that.
All right, so we'll just move on to the this month's agenda. So for anybody who's unfamiliar with our process, the first items on our agenda are our consent agenda, and tonight that consists of seven items. We will typically vote on all of those items as one slate and not separate out any of those items unless any members of the public came specifically to comment on them. So for all of those items, those are PLPC 2022, 22, 21, 23, 15, 24, 2018, 3, and 2022, 25. I'll read the addresses real quick so that people know which addresses we're referring to. It's 40 River Street, 219 Fourth Street, 23 Second Street, 4143 Third Street, the Trojan Hotel, 251 River Street, 141 Congress Street, and 120 Husick Street. So if any members of the public who are here in person or on Zoom remotely did want to comment on any of those items on the agenda, please raise your hand now. Use the hand raising function on Zoom. Otherwise, we'll just take a vote on all of those items as one.
Chair, I don't, I don't see any hands raised on Zoom. If anyone has any comment, feel free to unmute yourself.
Hey, Anthony, it's Roddy. I just wanted to make note that in the staff report, I saw at least for the first item that there was a conditional recommendation, so I didn't know if that would play into how we would batch vote.
Oh, that's, yes. Roddy, thank you for pointing that out. That's, that's true. There are three, three of these proposals. When reviewed by Department of Public Utilities, Chris Whelan over there had just a reminder that they would require DPU approval for the sanitary sewer flows expected. I, I, I think that you could still, still take action tonight. Perhaps the action could be, and Andy, if you're on the line, perhaps the action could be to approve the consent agenda items with the stipulations stated in the staff report. And that would cover those, those three items. And there were no other stipulations for any of the other items.
Andy, I see you're on. Were that satisfied, do you think, if we just state that in the, in the vote?
Makes good sense to me, but I'm just, this is Roddy.
I see Andy's on. He still seems to be muted.
Well, yeah, let's ask forgiveness, not permission.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve all of the items on the consent agenda with those stipulations? And do we have a second? Okay, going to a vote. Barbara Higbee, Suzanne Spellin, Sarah Winger.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
I vote yes. The motion carries all the items on the consent agenda are approved with the stipulations as stated in the staff report. All right, moving on to old business. We have one item on the agenda, 2022-11. This is 487 Campbell Avenue. I see we have the applicant present. Or do we have the applicant present?
Yep, we're here. Derek Ribulis with Castle Architecture and Nick Regioni, the owner.
Okay. So I see this is on for site plan review. Do you want to, do you have a presentation, or do you want us to put the application up on the?
You want me to share my screen?
You can show your screen, or Aaron can bring the application up on our end.
Oh, I would, I would much prefer you do it.
Just give me one second. Okay, I'm gonna start sharing the site plan. Hopefully you can see it. Can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we met. We were on the agenda for last month, and we took a lot of the board's comments into consideration and revised the site plan based on the comments. I can just go through it real quick. Can we just see here? So one of the comments we had was that there was just too much asphalt with not enough green, intimate green space. So we took away a few of the parking spaces and added some green islands, which could be landscape. We took away seven spaces in the front of the project that we were going to use as bank parking spaces if need be. And we also took away two, two of the compact spaces and added outdoor patio in that could be used by the first floor tenant, commercial tenant. And the other changes that we made were connecting the existing crosswalk that comes across Campbell Ave now from the sidewalks that Mr. Regioni previously installed. So we've connected those back further into the site, connecting over to the new sidewalk behind the new proposed building here. So last time, there was some concern about how people could get into the site and back into the commercial spaces on this new building by foot. So we've connected the existing crosswalks and sidewalks with a new crosswalk here, which connects to our main sidewalk on the rear of the building. The other changes were to the actual building architecture. Can you see the building?
Yep.
Okay. Um, so we made some revisions to the exterior aesthetic. We revised the yellow siding to be more of a beige, and we removed some of the dormers, which were considered too busy. And went with more of a central design with a dormer in the middle and with an arched piece of trim that kind of emulates a truss at the top. We also lowered the pitch of the roof. The pitch was much steeper before, so that the building height would come down quite a bit. And I think that about covers the changes.
Thank you. Any commission comments? No.
Is my mic on now?
Yes.
My mic is fine, but my voice is. After, after the presentation last month, I thought about this, and I got very uncomfortable with the pedestrian situation. And I know you've improved it somewhat, but it seems to me that adding that drive-through, where you're going to have people coming through for that drive-through, swinging through this whole place, it, it just doesn't make any sense to me, and I don't know how you can mitigate it. So you've had to put the two lanes there. You've got people backing up into it, and I know it's not like a speed lane or something, but it just seems to me that, that I just don't see how that works, and it's very pedestrian, unfriendly and dangerous. And I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't say anything last time because it didn't occur to me. I just been sort of flummoxed by it. But now I've thought about it, and actually, the next morning I woke up and said, I've just got issues with that.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a pretty critical part of the project, and it was already approved for a drive-through. We have one on the other parcel.
I don't have any problem with the other one, because there was nothing around it. What this is, is the people going to this drive-through are going to go all the way around through this whole place and just, anybody coming in the front or the back is going to encounter it. I, I just have a problem.
Keep in mind, this was already approved at earlier planning to have this drive-through approved.
I guess pending site plan, though. I mean, the site plan has to work. It's just my opinion.
This is Sarah Winger. I, I concur with Barb. And and I think that my reaction was so very much focused on the green space and the architecture at the last meeting that I did not appreciate the safety risks associated with residents living above a commercial business that is a drive-through business. The two functions just don't seem compatible to me.
So that, that, you know, that's a big spike in this project. We, you know, then we wouldn't be able to do it because the drive-through is going to carry this, uh, this project. We're looking at an empty lot that's been there for 50 years. You guys just want an empty lot there then? I don't know.
I don't think anybody's saying that we want an empty lot there, but we, we want to make sure that whatever use it's put to.
A thousand percent. We've been, I've been on that block for a lot of years, paid a lot of taxes. I have multiple places. I want something that works, I want to bring revenue to the town, but, you know, again, it was, so it was approved for a drive-through. We have one right next door. We have a few tenants. There's only going to be eight apartments above, one bedroom. When you, you know, it's a, it's, the site is, uh, we're trying to do the best use for that site. So we have, you know, we're constrained.
This is Barbara. One, one thought I had was, everything you've done is to make the pedestrians go over to the other side to go back out. I'm, I'm just wondering if there's any way to make a sidewalk along the building, you know, like next to 10 and A there. I'm not a designer. I'm not a person to be the one that solves the problem, but I think that it needs to have some more thinking. But the fact that there's no, that the sidewalk directs you over to the Dunkin' Donuts and then around and then out, I, I just don't understand.
Go on.
Is there a minimum clearance in that two-way between the two buildings? Is that meeting the minimum, or are you exceeding?
Are you, are you talking about the 23, the 23-foot 10? There's, there's no, the, the city doesn't have by code a minimum. Typically, drive aisles are 24 feet. That's not really for two-way traffic. That's more for vehicles to reverse. So I would say as long as you have 20 feet, you know, that would be tight. But that, you know, we have streets that are two-way that have about 20 feet clearance. Two cars can pass each other with, with 20 feet. I don't think 23, just under 24 feet is excessive by any means.
So they could put a sidewalk there?
They, they, they may be able to squeeze one in there, especially if they're eliminating the, the sidewalk on the Dunkin' Donuts side. You know what I mean, right? If you, if you prefer to have the sidewalk on the residential side, then you're just, you're just mirroring, and you're just blocking.
I would think so. It might do some good if it was on the residential side. I don't know how they get from there on across the street. I, I don't know, but to not have a way to walk around that building and have the whole building circled, just, it just, it, it just didn't work after a while.
Chair, I just want to mention that we, it looks like we do have a public comment.
I did see that, yeah. I did want to give the commissioners a chance to comment first if there were any other comments or questions. Any other questions or comments from the commissioners?
Excuse me, am I allowed to comment?
Yes, I was just seeing if there were any further commissioner comments before we turn to the public.
Okay.
We'll get there in just one second.
Thanks.
This is Suzanne. I do think that your sign for the building is much better. Thank you.
This is Roddy. I also agree. The roof line's been improved. I think one thing to consider with the flow of traffic is that there's not going to be necessarily constant flow of, of residential tenants upstairs in and out of the building. I mean, you're looking at, I forget how many units, but it, it doesn't strike me as something that's some super elevated risk.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's four units per floor, so there's only eight units total, and they're all one bedroom, so we're not talking about multiple, you know, bedrooms in there for more, more people. So at the most, we're talking one or two people per, per partner.
I guess my comment to fellow commissioners would be, we, we have tons of residential spaces above commercial units all throughout Troy on roads that are frequently, you know, being driven across, and people manage to cross the street safely.
Not above a drive-through, though. Where there is full, there's full vehicular circulation around the entire perimeter of the building.
In Troy, there's no residential apartments above, above a drive-through? Is that what you're telling me?
I don't know that for a fact, but I can't think of one.
Domino's on Lucic.
Yeah.
One that comes to mind.
Yeah, Dunkin' over there. I mean, that's just one. There's a bunch.
I guess a sidewalk also.
Oh, I'm not, I'm, I'm just, it was just, it was just one that came to mind.
Yeah, I'm just adding, I'm just talking about somehow adding a sidewalk, or even why Dunkin' Donuts has to be completely ringed with sidewalk and not even one lane of sidewalk. That's, that's, I don't.
Yeah, Nick and I were just talking about, it's just, it's just tight from, you know, from side to side over here, what we have left of this property to develop. The only thing we can maybe do is get rid of the escape lane, but there's usually, I'd have to check the code and see if that's required by Troy. So if we got rid of this escape lane, I could push the building over a little bit, get a sidewalk in this side.
Well, let's turn to the public comments and see what, if any members of the public have so I know we have at least one person with their hand raised. Irene, can you please state your name for the record, name and address, and try to limit comments to no more than three minutes? Thank you.
No problem. So my name's Irene Sorianto. I live on Tua Dare Road. I am the council representative for District Six. I am very concerned. I want to express my concerns about this project. Mostly because of the height of the proposal. The height of the propose, of the, the height is, that's being proposed is 50 feet. And the maximum height in this, in that zone is 35 feet. Um, I'm, so the surrounding, the surrounding build, the buildings surrounding that property are only one story, where this proposal is looking like it's going to be three stories, so it's definitely going to stick out like a sore thumb. Also, has there ever, has there been any community engagement notifying the neighbors, the surrounding neighbors, to see if they can, you know, come in and provide their, their feedback on, on this? I, I just, this is, this is definitely concerning to me, especially since it's, it's several feet past the, the maximum height that's, that zone for, for that area. I'm not against putting anything in there. I'm not against, you know, I, I'm not against putting a, a business in there or, you know, but um, the traffic does concern me, and definitely the height of the building. So that's, that's something that I think really needs to be looked at before anybody goes ahead and approves this.
I see the applicant, I wanted to say something in response.
Yes, I'm, I'm sorry. Your name is Irene Serantino?
Sorianto.
Sorianto. How you doing, Irene? Nick Regioni?
Hi.
Hi. So you say you're a councilwoman for that district?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
And I live right up the street from there.
Okay, great. So you guys, we just built some, you guys, there's new construction right next to the old Steel treaters on that, on that little, you know, the condo project they put up?
On the opposite side, the total opposite side, but everywhere that surrounding area is all one story.
I'm, I'm just considering, how many, I mean, they, they seem to be high, probably just as high as this project. Yeah, maybe even higher. Probably higher. So and that's like a less than a block away. So when you say that this is going to stick out like a sore thumb, how about, you know, a block away? You know, so I don't think that's a valid argument.
Okay, we're talking about a total opposite side of the street where you have Franklin Terrace, that's one story. You have Dunkin' Donuts, that's one, that's one story. You have De Mayo's Liquor Store in that plaza there, that's one story. You have Cumberland Farms, that's one story. You have the Iron Works there, that's all one story. You have the, the Stewart's there, that's one story. And then you're going to put a three-story building up in the mid, in between every one of those? On, on that same road? I mean, we have, we have on the other side, that of the projects that you're talking about, we do have, we, we have households that are more than one story, but I'm talking about that side of the road itself.
What's the difference? What, what, so before, before we, you put up that stuff right next to Steel Treaters, there wasn't something that high? Correct?
I, I'm not.
And I knew it since the president.
I can just interrupt. I don't want to go back and forth between.
Yeah, I'm not going to go back and forth.
My, my two cents. You know, I, we've been on that road for a long time. This is not the first project that we did. So, you know.
What I am saying is, I am just addressing my concerns, okay? This is how I believe, this is how I feel, and I am also representing the residents in my district, and I'm also going to be talking to the residents. I think that there should be some transparency with these neighbor, with, with the residents. You should be a part of these neighborhood groups, explain, have a presentation and demonstrate to them what your proposal is, rather than shove it down our throats. I, I, this is, I mean.
I have it down our throat. I mean, anyone's throat. That's why we're having, that's why you're speaking, and we had all businesses.
But you're arguing with me. You are arguing with me.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just.
If I can have the applicant both do this.
I'm just.
I am just addressing my concerns. That is all.
And that's valid concern, and that's your opinion. But like I said, there's bigger structures right across the street opposite this project. So when you say it's going to stick out like a sore thumb, that's your opinion. My opinion is right across the street. It's, we have construction that's hired and it's built.
If I can just speak to the comments regarding public engagement, this is the public process regarding the ability for members of the public, such as yourself and any other residents, who are affected, to come and comment. So.
Yeah, could I also, could I provide additional comment on that? So, so, you know, the, the noticing requirements that we have require that we notice the, the five closest properties to any, any proposed project. And in this instance, that does not extend beyond the neighbors on Campbell Avenue. So our noticing would not have reached the Emerald Greens neighborhood, because that's well outside the, the five properties in the area. Although, you know, we did notice, you know, we noticed Cumberland Farms, right? It's like three doors down, and they, they received notice. As far as the, the height, Miss Orientos is, is correct. The, the, the height in this zone is, the max height is 35 feet. And the applicant is correct. Our place down the street, I believe, exceeds that, that height. There are three-story buildings with gabled roofs. This project, as currently proposed, would require an area variance for height. And that would be, I think, the, the appropriate venue to discuss the, you know, the impact that the, that, that height would have on the neighborhood.
Can I ask the applicant, have you yet applied for the variance for the height of the proposed development?
Yes, we did. Today.
And are you on this month, coming month's zoning board agenda?
Yeah, we submitted today. That was the deadline. I think it's April.
Okay, so you're on the April agenda.
This, this is Roddy. I also have a question height-wise. Was, was a monosloped roof, roof considered to keep the total height of the roof down, or was there a functional reason you wanted to have a gabled roof?
Yeah, I mean, we, we liked the, the sloped roof just because it was more of a residential feel. We're trying to mix the two styles, you know? Going with like a flat roof, we just changed it to more of like a commercial building overall. But you know, that's just what we're proposing right now is to keep the slope proof.
So it's from a purely aesthetic purpose?
Are there any other members of the public who came to comment on this proposal tonight? Anything on Zoom?
I, I, I don't believe so. I don't see any hands raised. Yeah, I don't, I don't believe so.
I guess I would like to suggest, since there's time, that, not time sitting here tonight, thankfully, but time that you could perhaps reconsider the site. The pedestrian safety on the tenant C side, you've got 25, maybe even almost 26 feet. And on the more crowded two-way side, you've got 23 feet. If there's any way that you could get a sidewalk along that building, or you figure it out. I, I hate to even suggest it because I'm just terrible at that, but it should be, I think it should be more pedestrian safe. I personally don't have a problem with the height, and I like the fact that they've tried to make the, the building look like it is a residential building with a commercial on the first floor. I think we're looking for tax base. We're looking for projects that can, that don't have a negative effect. And if the, if the pedestrian safety issue was a little bit more addressed, I would be happy.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I share Barb's concerns. You know, I don't see having residential units on top of a commercial space, even where there is a drive-through is itself, you know, something that is unworkable. I do think that the current proposal still has some issues that could be worked out. So in its current form, I don't think I could vote to approve it, but I think that maybe with some tweaking, it could be done. So if we could maybe adjourn it out past the zoning board meeting and see if some revisions can be made once they've had a chance to review the height variance. And, you know, I, I don't know if any other commissioners have any specific comments they want to leave the applicant with.
That would work for me.
Sarah or Roddy?
I have questions, but I'm not going to ask them. They're just beating a dead horse.
No further comments.
Okay. Okay, uh, we do have to make a secret determination on this application still. So I don't know if we want to do that tonight and then, or if we want to wait until we see a revised site plan. It's unlisted.
I, 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 I would suggest that you, you allow the ZBA.
Yeah.
To do secret, um, as that, the, the height variance is likely going to be, uh,
That's the most.
Yeah, well, not, not diminish the, the involvement of the planning commission, but I think that's going to be the hotter topic, so.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. So we'll, we'll hold off on making a secret determination and leave it to the ZBA if they want to take the lead. So unless you have anything, any further questions for us, uh, I think we're just going to adjourn it to the April agenda. Eric, what's the date of the April meeting? The twentieth? Okay. Um, does that work for you? Do you have any other questions?
No, so the, uh, the zoning meeting was, uh, was on the twentieth, you said?
Our next meeting is on the twentieth.
The zoning meeting is the sixth.
But we'll adjourn this application to our meetings that that will.
Yeah, so it'll be, I guess, we're just making sure it's going to be after the zoning, that's all.
Yeah, we'll need to motion the table to the twentieth meeting.
I move the table it to the April twentieth meeting.
Going to a vote, Barbara Higby, Suzanne Spellen, Sarah Wengert. Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
I vote yes. Application is adjourned to April twentieth.
Thank you very much for your time. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just, uh, share one slight, um, adjustment to the agenda. Um, if we could move the ninety Ida Street proposal in front of Monument Square, uh, I'm sure that resident would appreciate it.
Yeah, I think that's wise, since Monument Square is likely going to take a lot of time.
Yeah.
Is the, uh, oh, and before I go on, I, I know there were some people in the audience who seemed to be from the consent agenda. I think they might have left by now. But anybody, if you are here for any items on the consent agenda, just to be clear, that agenda, all the items on it were approved. You don't need to stay any further. Uh, if you are here for anything on the consent agenda, those are the first seven items on our agenda. Those have been approved. You don't need to stick around. Um, but we will turn, uh, we'll jump to the last item on the new business agenda, which is ninety Ida Street. That is PLPC twenty, twenty-two, twenty-six. Do we have the applicant present?
Uh, you can come right up to the mic here. Um, it should be on. If not, there's a little switch, the microphone that is, there's a little switch on the bottom if it isn't, but you can tap it. Be sure it's, no, there's a switch on the bottom, just.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Sam Chapone, ninety Ida Street, Troy.
We, I don't.
Oh, I'm gonna, I'm working on it, yeah.
Yeah, takes me a little while. So maybe while Aaron's bringing it up, I'll just, just explain. I purchased a vacant lot, um, near my home. Uh, kind of as a way to improve the neighborhood. When I moved into the, the block, it was filled with junk cars and old tires. So I purchased it from the city. I've had it for a while. Um, my family, we also own six homes in the neighborhood and I own another vacant lot in the neighborhood. Couple of them have been purchased through the city of Troy and we rehab them, um, not as a flip, but we own them all. So the intention here is to continue in improving the neighborhood and that, that lot and to put a, um, five hundred and fifty square foot prefab metal garage on the spot for, for personal use, not for a garage or a auto mechanic shop or anything like that for personal use. So the, the property is located at the intersection of Ida and Fifth Avenue in South Troy. Um, as you're traveling south on, um, on Fifth Avenue, it will be on the left-hand side. Uh, this used to be the dead-end street of Fifth Avenue with butts right up against the post and kill canal.
You guys familiar with the site or what is he, you want to, you want to look at the site or the, the garage plans?
The garage will be, the garage will be at the, um, the furthest, most, um, the deepest part of the lot with three-foot setbacks around, um, actually four-foot on two sides of it and three feet on the backside of it against the post.
That's the lot right now.
That's the lot. And the garage will be back against those metal. They're actually railroad ties from, uh, the, uh, the rail joint in South Troy. So it'll be back against that.
When I look at this on maps, uh, the address comes up as like ninety and ninety-two.
And no, it's, it's not. It's a bit confusing because we live at ninety Ida Street. And this lot does not have a, um, an Ida Street address at this time. However, um, I did, I did talk with, um, with the city assessor and she, um, put me in touch with Rensselaer County and it now has been assigned an address of ninety-four Ida Street.
Prefab metal?
Yes, prefab metal. And it, we have, um, site-specific engineering plans that we've got for the building.
And I assume this is in the flood zone?
Yes.
There's no mitigation on the, garage level. The cars have to be able to drive in, so you can't put it on still.
Oh, yeah, right. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, no, it's a nice idea. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Uh, you said three-foot setback from where?
Uh, from the canal, from, from the backside, from the backside of the, from the backside of the lot.
Okay, um, I, this is kind of pushing more towards Aaron's territory, but foundation system-wise for this, is it going to be like frost walls?
It's a monolithic, uh, it'll be a monolithic slab, so it looks a lot like an Alaskan slab.
Yes.
The drawing, the drawings call for the foundation to be below frost, so it'll actually be, it'll, it'll be more of a traditional, uh, foundation. It just doesn't, it doesn't call for continuous footing at the bottom of it.
The only reason I'm asking is really just in consideration of the slope when you're, when you're that close. Just especially, you know, put some thought into the fact that when, when you get some floods, you'll have erosion. I just want to make sure Aaron's comfortable with all that and I'm sure you already have given thought to that, Aaron.
Yeah, I, um, I, I, I can't, I don't recall if the, is there the canal wall behind, behind your lot?
Yeah, there's.
I know it's hit or miss.
There's a wall, there's a wall.
Yeah.
Put up by the WPA along that.
Yeah, yeah. So this, this, um, Roddy, in this area, we still have, um, we still have a concrete wall in place along the canal. So that'll take the brunt of any, any flooding or scouring.
Gotcha.
You don't have that everywhere, but, but we do.
Yeah, it is there, yes.
From Sarah, that she'd like to see the site plan.
I don't, I don't actually think I have, I think I have the survey. I don't know if I have.
No, there, I, I did a, there's a sketch in there, Aaron, that's.
Did that not make it into the packet? Oh, oh, I don't have, I don't have that in these materials. We do have a sketch of, of.
How it lays out?
Yeah, we just don't have that.
I understand.
I don't have that as part of this. No.
And then what, uh, what, what type of siding? Um, Todd?
It's metal, it's metal prefab siding. The garage will be, it's a, uh, it's a dark gray color for the siding. The roof is a barn red and the trim is black. It's a corrugated metal siding, running in, running in the, uh, horizontal direction.
Any lighting plans?
Uh, not at, not at this time. It's under consideration. It's something that I would like to do. There's no lighting on the site now.
If I could, is there a sidewalk that goes across the front of that drive?
Yes, there is.
Oh, yeah, I see it.
No, it's a curb cut, actually. It's, it's a sidewalk, so, but it's always been that way. It's a curb cut.
Yep.
You see it there? Yeah.
So it's already.
Yep. I don't, yeah, I don't need a curb cut now.
Catch basin there ties into what the structure there?
This thing, city sort.
Oh, I'm, I'm concerned about the potential of approving the site plan without a site plan. On, in a flood zone adjacent to the canal. I have no problem with the project at all, but not knowing where it lands on the site is a concern.
I guess, uh, if you, if, well, I don't know if you can see here, but I can sketch and show you where it is.
I think we need a site plan.
Give me, uh, we're, we're working on it. We did receive one. I, it just did not make it into the packets here.
And, uh, can you just clarify? So on the one side is a house, your house?
Yes.
Your house. And then it's the garage. And then what's on the other side? The, the potential.
If, if you're looking at the site facing south, there's a home to the left, there's a vacant lot to the right. There's ninety-two Ida Street and then there's my house.
So the, the, I, is there anything else in between?
You can bring up the, the, uh, can you bring up the, uh, the survey?
There's a building on one side and then next to it, there's just parking for the adjacent property.
So this is the lot. This is Fifth Avenue here. This is the lot. This is, this is a vacant, a vacant lot. And then this is a house. Then my house is here.
So you can see on the survey, the catch basin's the utility pole.
Yep. Um, the, the proposed use of garage is just residential, right? Just parking?
Yes, it is. Yes.
Not going to be like a commercial general shop or anything?
Nope.
All right, bear with me, because we, we do have it to share. Give me, uh, no section here. Uh, and Sarah, that will be in the, uh, shared drive if you'd like to access that yourself.
Thanks, Aaron.
Yep, no, no. You can thank Eric.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. So this is it back from, it, it sits on the backside of the lot.
And so does it, sorry, I heard, I heard the question earlier about a, forgive me if I'm using the wrong term, the C wall, uh, the retaining wall for the, I mean, how far are we from that? Are we, not that this, the foundation system for the garage would compromise the C wall, but do we need to be X number of feet away from that structure?
Is, is that a question for me?
Well, it's really a question for the applicant, but. Is there a setback?
Yes. I'm, I'm going by the city setback, which is three feet. And that's, I mean, I'm going three feet off the, I'm going three feet off the existing retaining wall, which is about two feet wide. So I'm really five feet off the, off the, uh, the bank.
Yeah, this is, uh, if you're asking about setbacks, uh, Sarah, this conforms with those. It's an excess, it's considered an accessory structure. Um, if you're asking about the structural integrity of the wall, this would essentially be no different than parking vehicles up to the wall, which is a common practice along there.
Okay, well, if I don't, common practice doesn't hold a lot of weight, but if you are assuring us that this is in compliance with all required setbacks, as a matter of course, and that there are no additional specific setbacks required at a canal C wall in the city of Troy, then I would be satisfied.
I, I am saying that, yes.
Okay. Wanted to hear it. Thank you. I have no further comment.
Thank you.
So the lot, as it exists now, is paved or, uh?
Yes, it's paved now, yes.
Okay, so, um, there's no change in the amount of permeable surface that there would be as a result of this.
No.
Yeah, well, this is a type-two action. So, uh, sorry, before we turn to you, that, are there any members of the public who came to comment on this application tonight? Okay. Seeing nothing. Uh, so we've got, uh, it's a type-two actions. There's no secret determination on our part. So if the commissioners feel we have enough information, we can take action on the site plan.
Yeah, I'm prepared to make them, we approve it. Um, and unless anyone else says anything that they want to dig into.
I second that.
Okay, moving to a vote. Barbara Higby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen.
Yes.
Sarah Wengert.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. The site plan is approved.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, final item of the agenda. We have one monument square.
Good evening. Steve Strickman, Commissioner of Planning and Economic Development. I'm just going to give a three-minute introduction to a project that needs no introduction. When, uh, the city started back in, uh, twenty eighteen, we took a fresh approach, a fresh approach to the redevelopment of Monument Square with a three-day charrette. And it was overwhelmingly made clear to us that the public, that this project had been in the public realm for so long and that was anticipated was that there would be a preservation of views, the creation of a public plaza, parking and a connection down to the river. And because of these public asks, which I think we all can agree are good, good uses of this property, it limits the potential, the full potential, commercial development of this property. So basically, when the city put out an RFP, we anticipated this project would be a public-private partnership where the city or the LDC would own everything from River Street down, which includes the parking, the plaza on top and the connection down, and the developer would be responsible for everything from River Street up as well as components of the public space, uh, as well as components of the public space as well that are shared, shared costs. So what you're seeing tonight is no different than what was presented to the public on, in September, uh, which was, took a while to get to between the city and, uh, Hoboken Brownstone. And, uh, and it really received overwhelming positive response there, including applause at the end of the presentation. Tonight's just the first step in this, uh, in this presentation and like to point out that this project is also, it's in the, uh, process of running, applying for a DRI funding as well, which is the ten million dollars, uh, that was awarded at the end of last year by Governor Hochul. So you're not going to see any construction immediately. Those awards aren't going to be made out until later this year. But I'd like to get the process started as with the developer as well. So this is a type-one action for environmental review. You've got full package in front of you tonight. And I would like to request at least that this, that the planning commission, after it does its review, asks questions, uh, provides feedback, declares their intent to act as lead agency, so that, uh, then the city staff will basically get the notices out to the involved and interested agencies so that we can get rolling on really what is going to be a major transformational project for downtown. I'll be here for the presentation. If you have any questions for me afterwards, I'm going to hand the presentation off now to Andy Rimp from Abella Corporation. I'll take the presentation. Thank you.
So, uh, Aaron, I didn't ask, do you have the?
Uh, yeah, yes, I can, I can, uh.
I have it on a flip drive.
Is it on, is it on this one or is it on another one? Is it just the PDF?
While Aaron's loading that up, just reintroduce myself. I'm Andy Rimp from Lobello Associates here tonight. With Ken Tyerson, we'll speak a little bit later from SRA, the architects for the project. We're here on behalf of One Monument Square LLC. The applicant for the project. And as Steve said, really, the sole purpose of tonight's meeting is, is hopefully get playing board to. To carve their intent to be the lead agency for circulation of secret documents. So we have a presentation that a lot of the material you're going to see is in the playing board packet. And then there's some imagery as well, the public presentations. And so. Okay, give you a little bit of backstory. So I'll walk you through the site plan a little bit and then, and then hand over to Ken for the architectural components. And then, and then we'll go from there. So you can go ahead there and then look for the next one. So on the site side of things, I wanted to just walk everybody through the land ownership of the parcels, because there's a couple of parcels that are involved in the project action. So the two parcels you see in the red here that are closed in the red, those are two existing tax parcels that are now presently owned with the city. And then there's a third piece of property that's involved in the action. That's in the upper right hand corner, which is a small piece of an old parcel. That was incorporated into River Room Park already. So it's actually a piece of River Room Park right there. So you have the two parcels, one at the south end, one in the core area. Together, those two parcels are 1.57 acres. In the AF, you'll see that the project area is described in the secret documents and quantified is 1.95 acres. And the reason for that is area on River Street in the front that you see. That was added, some of the streetscape improvements that I'll walk you through. That's a piece of it. And tying back some of the improvements that you'll see into the Riverfront Park area. There's a separate, you know, city initiative for redevelopment of the design of Riverfront Park. That's. Kind of separate in continuous effort there. So if you flip, so right now, everybody probably has a visual of what's on the site. But right now in the site, you basically at the lower tier level, it's elevation anywhere from elevation 11 to 14. And then River Street's up at elevation 32 and a half. So you have that big wall that's out there today holding up River Street. So this part, this piece, I'm going to start because our actions are the site plan approval ultimately and subdivision. So I walked through the proposed, the line work here is the proposed subdivision. So if you see the blue parcel outline, that's the parcel of land that would. End up going through the LDC and, and all of the residential and commercial components of the building would be contained on that property. The property in green that you'll see, and apologize for I read here. This red line. This is a 50 foot swath of land that's going to be maintained by the city as public open space and part of the waterfront. Our plan and incorporated and merged into the Riverfront Parc, our parcel. So from a size perspective, it's about roughly 1.15 acres for the blue outlined area that'll be at the LDC. Through an LDA, a local development agreement. And then the park or the waterfront park portion is about 0.4 acres. So that's kind of the split of that. If you want to, I think we can stay on here for a moment. I think I'll go through a little bit of the design. I'll go through all the design process. Anybody that. Charette and heard all the big words and the really nice things, but I'll kind of walk you through this side. You know, the idea of the, of the site is on the land covered side of things that you see. The building itself, the gray hatched area, that footprint is approximately 22,000 square feet. The public plaza space, which is area around the building. That's up on the plaza level, up at that street level. Everything is at the same level as River Street. So there's, there's no step ups, step downs at that level. It's a public plaza. That's about 21,500 square feet. So there's about equal amount of public open space on the upper plaza level as there is the building footprint. And then there's an extra about 25,000 square feet of other property and area that's whether it's the park or other improvements that are associated with that. So it's kind of a 111 mix between building plaza and public space. And the plaza is all public space as well. Underneath the footprint here, Ken can go through a little bit more of the details, but there's two levels of parking. Underneath the garage level, the garage level, I'll once again point to it, but I'll give you an outline of the garage. Everything within this buffer level, I'm sorry, here. Everything in that is parking garage. And at two levels are contained about 115. 115 parking spaces between the two levels. And so where we're at currently in the design or in the field is you've probably seen some activity down site now. Some of the public infrastructure improvements are going on. Now stabilizing of the existing retaining walls that are there. Relocation of some of the water sewer and storm utilities doing the storm sewer separation project. Those are all public. Public project that's going on currently today. So walking you through design real quick, you know, there's, there's initial charrette. Had a lot of, you know, five key themes that came out of the shirt. One was to have the things that came out for the public input. There was a prominent public plaza was one of the items that was something that was desired, an enhanced view shed. Allow for accessibility. Activate of the park, activation of the park space to create connectivity throughout the site. And to build a destination. That was really a key theme is build a destination. The old city all sites been sitting in the core of downtown. You know, make it underutilized for extended period of time. Also building a destination is what was the main theme that came out of the public input. So that goes all the way back to a shirt process. Fast forward, you know, to our, our presentation and what our approach is. And here it stays consistent with those, those initial pillars. So our objectives of for the public space were to create a destination. Utilize this site in this parcel in this project to create a destination, have an iconic public plaza, not a small public open space, but an iconic. Public open space. Activate this site. The way we activate the site is this is a really critical piece of infrastructure in downtown Troy. This is the great opportunity to connect people from downtown up at the River Street level and at, at the, at the monument area on Broadway. To connect people meaningfully to the waterfront, to the river and vice versa. So this site sits in as a key kind of nexus to do that. And that's how we activate that space. Allow for accessibility throughout the entire site. It's, it's obtained in the design vernacular that's accessible for people of all abilities and. And ADA accessible and throughout, we really strived hard to make sure that was, that was in place. We want to integrate all the spaces, you know, you see here, integration of all these various spaces that kind of created sequence of activities. I'll walk you through the plan in just a second for that. But really, this sequence of activities is how we really integrate, you know, all types of. Visitors, you know, residents, people, young, you know, old, all, all different cultures could kind of all come together here. And we integrate people and we kind of weave them through the space. Talk about the connectivity, you know, drawing people in and out and we'll go through the building a little bit. You'll see some better imagery for some of that in just a moment. So a couple of key things I wanted to talk about, River Street, if you see on the public plaza side, which is. The, the half of River Street towards the north there on the bottom, that's about 150 feet wide. And I think that we really strive. To try to get as large of a public open space at the front as possible. And then on River Street, we're, we're using, we're taking away parking right in front, couple spaces right in front of the public plaza. Or we're maintaining the on-street parking there, brand new streetscape. There's ability to put EV charging stations, the scooter share, bike share, you know. Decorative crosswalks. So we really use that for traffic. So it really creates this new vibrant streetscape out in front of this area. Then on the waterfront side, you know, it's really about connecting Riverfront Park. The city's done a great job. Working and we've been fortunate to work on some of the initiatives going north. You know, the waterfront really is coming, coming together and being connected piece by piece. You know, from the north and then the south, there's still plenty of issues to extend this. So it's really important that the waterfront promenade. Really sympathetic to Riverfront Park and the other areas, but it basically creates this ribbon and this kind of activity that'll go eventually from North Troy to all the way down through the south, through South Troy. And that's going to bring people, you know, down to the river, you know, give them various activities. What you'll see is. There's various elements such as seating areas, a trellis swing area, playful kind of steps that perform an amphitheater. Opportunities for pop-up vendors, you know, along the waterfront, bike racks, connectivity of walkways, multiple ways to connect from the river to the public. Plaza up above, like I said before, it's 18 feet. So there's a little bit of grade change there. So you see. That esplanade as that walkway, kind of a V-shaped walkway that's all accessible. And then it's linked with two stairs. And so some of the imagery you'll see will help demonstrate that, that it's really key, those connections. And then the public space in the plaza, it's really important we thought about this flexibility of the space. You know, if that's, that's an outdoor market. You know, on a particular day or just, you know, it was a festival, there's a movie night, any of those things are open for opportunity. If you infuse the public, the 20,000 square feet plus a public plaza space with the ability to have movable furniture, have decorative lighting. You know, sound systems, things like that, that really can invigorate that space and allow it to be flexible for a different type of use any given day. So that was kind of a really key component for us. Do you want to fast forward? Okay, utilities I talked about a little bit. This is just an apartment which to show that there's a lot of stuff going on down at the site. You know, when it comes to utilities, but as I mentioned, one of the key pillars is to help with the storm sewer offset for the combined sewer overflow. So there is a disconnect that's. That's happening at River Street to bring separate storm and sanitary sewer down to the river. And you can see kind of a lot of the contours, topo kind of shows that grade, shows a lot of interest throughout. Front Street I've mentioned does on the north side, Front Street. Apparently the old Baker Street and Front Street are in the river. So part of the, part of the project will be the city council requirement to abandon, formally abandon the Front Street section. And then the traffic flow would flow from the north into the garage. Base and then back out the space and so. So it'd be one way and it'd have a controlled parking garage environment. You can go ahead there. Here's a colored site plan that shows you a little bit. Better imagery of what I was explaining before, shows the floor plan, but I'm going to turn this over now. And like Ken can walk you through the architectural programming for this.
My name is Ken Tyerson, SRA Architects. I were the architect for the project. So early on, when we started working on the project, after reading through all the constituents, wants, needs, desires, we kind of developed an overall theory or. Kind of like a mission statement for the project and we called it evolution, right? We wanted to portray. How we could reinvigorate this one monument square parcel with a little bit of the history of Troy. So what we started out with on the left-hand side. Story building and our inspiration for that was like an 1840s, 1860s building where I might have a proprietor like a baker that lives on the first floor and they live on the second floor. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why we did some of these items, but they kind of all interwoven it and it kind of made a lot of logical sense at the end. So we started off with the baker's building and then we go, you know, a couple of years later, we see Troy developing and here we have a five-story building. Coins, we still, you know, a lot of the materials that we picked that we'll show you a little bit later today is. Materials that are appropriate for the age. We're not looking to, you know, replicate buildings that are in the Troy city. We're taking inspiration from them to develop an overall project. So as we walk along River Street, we see an evolution of both the history of Troy with the buildings becoming more factory-like. You know, and modern technologies on the building on the corner. We have a, you know, a mercantile building. So we were showing the evolution of how Troy developed over the years from the 1840s to 1880s, 1890s. And the types of buildings that you'd find in there. I mean, there's a great fire here. I read that story. And how they had more product in the building that burned down than actually valued it though. Right? So it was kind of like, you know, interesting things. So we took a little bit of inspiration from that building that burned down and replicated it in our building number three. Go to the next slide. And so we've done a whole bunch of views just to really try to convey how open the space is and our whole design aesthetics. So. Here you can see what Andy was talking about earlier today where it's really wide on the River Street facade and then it. Is a little bit narrower, but it's still over 90 feet, which is pretty generous, right? Getting down to the riverside. And this is our, like our modern factory building that sits prominently on site. Then if we go to the next slide, we'll see that, oh, here it is like yesterday. Took a picture of the, of the building out there yesterday. It just kind of quiet. We tried to show how it's winter time, right? Let's go to the next slide. We have so many views because we, we really studied the building and how it interacts with the site. So here you can see how the building, like. I obviously it's a bird's eye view. You can see how grand the promenade or the courtyard is there with. Monument, things along those lines. You can see the river on the other side. Let's go to the next one. This is probably going to be showing next week. Here we have jaws 19. It's coming out soon. So we're showing how this plaza could be activated for the public use. So here we have. You know, just a movie night on the plaza, which is just showing again some of the items that, you know, just the diversity of. Events and venues and attractions that we offer here. Go to the next one. Probably have way too many slides. It's such a fun project to design. We really wanted to capture a whole bunch of the different vignettes and sightlines. So here you can really see the water bulkhead and one of the kind of a cool prominent buildings here is we really loved a lot of the warf buildings. So. At the 45 degree angle, we actually have a nice warf building that somebody came by a couple of years ago and put an addition on the top for penthouse apartment. And as, you know, we had that monumental staircase that Andy mentioned earlier and it has a nice forced perspective on the warp. So that when you're down on. Esplanade level, you're looking up, it's like a really grand showpiece for the history of Troy and, and you know, a little bit of a port. And just that whole mercantile sense in the city. And now you can see that the architecture as I'm, as we approach the riverside becomes way more modern. So it's more of a modern. This is like bridging the gap from where Troy is today and looking towards the future. So we've started out in the 1800s with a rich history with materials on those sides. And now we're using modern materials, grand open spaces, things along those lines. And go to the next one. And there again, we can see a nice aerial how, you know, wanted to give you a sense of scale to the neighboring buildings. So you can kind of see it, you know, it's not overpowering any of the other buildings. The way that it steps, it has a nice facade generation all along. And it's respectful to the community it's around it. And we just kind of spend 10 seconds on each slide. Just a couple of different views. This is sort of like where there's a nice spot in the building for a restaurant venue. Looking at having large doors that could open up so they can spill out onto the deck on nice summer days or fall days and spring days as well. And there's just a whole group of different scenes where you can get to see like the activation of integration of the site along with the building. Yeah, next one. And then we see it at nighttime, just a little nighttime shot. So as Andy said, we have just, I'll just go through real quick. I can talk about this project. Because I want to be here till one o'clock in the morning, but well, we have two levels of parking. So there's our parking garage. It's about 115 spots. Emergency generator, two elevators, trenches, stairs. Then. First floor is going to be retail spaces, restaurant, mercantile, things along those lines. And then we have, next slide, we have apartment floors. We've designed them so that now the dots are simply stacked one on top of the other. The, as you know, as you can. The uh, as you know, as you can see, you know, on the three D views that we just showed you, um, the building facades undulate a little bit. So pieces of the four decks are going to be falling off, you know, being smaller as we go uh higher up the number of floors. These are all our exterior materials. It's on our finished boards. Um, every building has its own personality, its own identity and its own type of materials that are associated with it that are kind of period. Um, correct. So I mean, just for instance, now the first building, ours, our oldest building, the two-story. Building has hand molded brick on it with um. Uh, an old-fashioned storefront on the front made out of wood, maybe wood-like materials, something that's not going to run away. But you know, what you see here is the evolution of even just brick to found. You go from molded brick to. Always to the end where it's extruded or handmade brick to fired brick, molded brick and then extruded brick. So now it's a, you know. Material selected is appropriate for the era of the building ever since. Now at the end, we have huge windows and stuff. I mean, yeah, waterside. So, and you can go one more. So those are all the materials that we've called out. Even the base of the wharf, because the wharf is an older building. So the first floor of the wharf that's down below. The first twelve feet of it is actually going to be a fieldstone. It's like the old stone foundations you see all along Front Street. And then you see some of our modern materials that we have there as well in the color schemes, some of the historic colors. And there's our nighttime render. There we are. Impression since I was talking nine hundred miles an hour.
So yeah, so that's, that's our presentation. Um, there's, there's a lot to consider. There's a lot of information in your, in your packages. Uh, as well. And like I said, our, our hope tonight is we're here tonight to. Yeah, to have the planning board declare themselves the, have to be lead agency for seeker to allow the circulation of seeker documents to the interested involved agencies. Um, there's quite a few in the, in the AF, there's quite a few interested and involved agencies on this particular project. So um, it's really just the start of the process as we said, and then we look forward to a good team and work with the board.
Thank you. Um. Yeah, I understand that this is only the first meeting and what are going to be probably a lot of meetings about this project and. Go deep into the details now, although if there are any commissioners who wanted to make any, any brief comments tonight, I'd know what, leave it open to them.
Anthony, it's Roddy. I'll, I'll jump in if I can. If I were there, I'd be giving a standing ovation. This is, this is great. Um, first and foremost, love, love, love what I'm seeing. Couple of comments that bumped to mind really quickly. I've, I've said it, it. Uh, a lot of the proposals for larger scale projects, and I will say it here again, please implore you, find a way to activate the roof. Especially along the river. Um, please find a way to, to use the roof space. I'm not sure if you mentioned what the top floor. Uh, was planned to be, whether it was just more commercial space or some residential. I, I, I missed that in terms of what the actual top floor was. But if there is a way to activate that rooftop along the river, it would be such a special space. Please try and find a way to work that into this plan. Otherwise, I, I adore what you guys have done with this site. Um, I love the materials. I think that the aesthetic of it is so. In keeping with what the spirit of Troy's buildings look like while bringing it forward into a modern time. Um, I think the park space and public space, the uh, I forget the, the zoning term for, for that. Uh, placemaking i- is great in this project. Um. There, I even commented on something small that I saw that I hope makes it into the actual final project. The pedestrian fence along the edge of the uh space here on the south side of, or sorry, on the west side of the building here. You can even see it in this shot. I really like that, that um fencing, that railing and fencing. Um, that, that's up along the pavilion area. Yeah, I mean, oh, and then one other comment. I wanted to see if there's any possibility of working in some more covered spaces. Uh, outside, maybe along River Street. So on the east side of the building. Uh, like where in this shot that we're looking at now, kind of in the gap between the two buildings, between the new structure and the one to the left, the existing building there. Building out just a uh covered space for either rainy days or, or honestly sunny days where people want to be in some more shaded space. That was just another thought I had, but those are just some general comments and, and Bravo. Uh, SRA does great work and tell Dennis he should have been here to, to also be presenting.
Something I wanted to mention is we do have a rooftop terrace in the southwest over building seven there. You can kind of see it in this view. Um, there's a pretty substantial rooftop terrace.
Is there a way to point at that with mouse? I'm not sure which, where did you say?
On the southeast corner, if you look at the, uh, just yeah, right up in there. All that rooftop is uh outside space.
Oh, got you, got you, got you. Is that residential or commercial? What is the planned use of that?
But, uh, but there's nothing planned on the northernmost building for the use of the rooftop or, or, yeah.
As far as your comments on the uh plaza, we were really trying to leave that open so it could be as flexible as possible. You know, maybe what you're looking for is a movable or fabric. Yeah, it's something that you can move, set up for three days and take down and move it somewhere else.
Yeah, maybe, perhaps something like that, yeah.
I guess I would just like to say also, I, I was thrilled with it when I saw it in City Hall presentation before. I'm thrilled now. I don't have really comments. I just think, I'm, I'm so pleased because it is both a festival marketplace and it will have residents and it will be lively. And so I've al- already gotten calls saying this is a game changer, people calling me and saying this is a game changer. We're moving to Troy. So that's, that's already happened.
I really like it too. Um, I'm an architectural historian and I'm very picky about new builds and, and you did it just right. So I'm looking forward to um seeing this get built.
I have one comment, which, you know, I do think that this idea of having different buildings that reflects different periods of architectural history is a charming one. But you know, I, I feel like this is probably a comment you very rarely hear, but it all seems almost a shame to have a two-story building on that corridor of River Street downtown. Considering that most of the surrounding buildings are taller and it seems like you, you know, you lose the ability to build higher where it's allowed. That's just a comment. You know, it's not saying that that's a deal breaker, but.
Logic to what we're doing. And since we don't own that adjacent building, we couldn't build it up another floor and then have all of our snow landing on that building and having collapse the roof. So we had to be consciously shorter than our neighbor. So that we didn't, so that we could take all the snow load of our big building onto our little building. And that's why we're here. What, one of the logical reasons.
I agree with Anthony that could you not have also put it at the same height, built a higher parapet wall to catch your snowdrift?
Um, I think it's a little deceiving because I think that the building is actually a little bit shorter. The adjacent building might be a little bit shorter than what it looks like this view. If you look at the buildings. And our Florida floor plates are taller. So it's, it was kind of a weird intersectional state. It's like off by five feet, right? We're eighteen feet and then fourteen feet. We're at thirty-two feet. I think the other buildings like thirty.
Unless there are any other commissioner comments, I don't know if Sarah wanted to add anything like you, they won't know who hasn't commented yet.
I'm happy. Thank you, Anthony.
Okay, um, so if we have a motion to.
I move that we become lead agency for seeker.
I will second that.
Hey, all those in favor, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
I vote yes. So um, motion carries. Planning Commission declares us up lead agency. We can go out and notify all the other interested agencies. Yes, intent to act as lead agency. Yes. Intent to act as lead agency. So we can notify all other interested agencies and trigger the notice period. I don't think we need to take any other action, right?
The only other thing I might suggest, and it doesn't have to be done, um, I don't think it needs to be in action, but would you guys like to have? Additional support in reviewing this project? Um, reviewing the seeker paperwork and that, that kind of stuff. Um, we would normally go out and have a, a consultant engineer onboard. Um, on your behalf as opposed to the engineers that are working on the project.
Yeah, there's a stack of it.
Right. Is that something you'd like me to, to coordinate for you guys?
I think this project merits that.
Yeah, I think it would benefit from it. Again, it's, it's, I understand that the city is a um somewhat of an involved party in the project, but it's typically what we would do on any other project of the scale.
Does the state offer any resources for that or will we just have to?
Hmm, I will. Actually, the developer will cover the cost.
All right, good to know.
All right.
Yeah, great.
Okay, um, then the last question is, do we want to table this until the applicant notifies the city to put it back on the agenda or is the date certain? Or does want to come back?
I, I, I would suggest you, you table this to a date certain, that date being.
Maybe the May.
May. I'm not, I'm not that certain. Um. Uh, May eighteen would be next meeting. So it's actually, yeah, I know it's two months, but that's, that's the schedule. Yeah, you, you, you will not have the notifications back in time for the.
Right. And then for whatever reason, any other agency says they would like to resolve that.
It gives us time to sort any, any, anything else out.
Okay.
And this would, this um, by tabling it to May eighteenth, we don't have to renotice or anything.
Yeah, all right.
Although it would be nice to have a bigger audience for this kind of presentation. It was a beautiful presentation. And so, and if it could be hybrid again, that would be helpful. So.
I, the, the, yeah, the, the open meetings law actually um. Uh, today is the last day of, of the current.
So much for the commissions, but for the people to be able, well, I guess there's other ways to get public comment.
Yeah. Oh, this meeting was open. Uh, this was just nobody, everyone attended virtually.
Who, who gets noticed for this type of project? Is it only the neighbors within a certain distance? Or for a project like this, does the entirety of the Troy zip codes get noticed? How's that work?
So the, the way noticing works is the, um, our code requires that the five nearest properties be noticed. Um, what we, what we typically do is we will, um, we will notice uh every property within a hundred feet. If that's more than five, so be it. If it's less than five, we'll expand that to every property within two hundred feet. Um, and we do that until we get about a half dozen or, or what have you properties. Um, so we meet the uh, uh, we meet the code. Um, in this case, you know, most of the adjacent owners again are commercial, commercial entities. Uh, when we notice a commercial building, uh residential building, that notice goes to the owner of the building, not to the occupants, not to the residents or tenants. It, you know, um, so you know, that, that's, that's just how it works. Notice this go through property owners, not to tenants.
Cause I, I just like to add that when the, when the agenda goes out, it's distributed through email to all city council people. All the neighborhood groups, uh, the bid. So this is circulated from there. It gets better further. So we meet the requirements, legal notice, but we. Go as far as we can to make sure on all modules of everything circulated as far as and to within the neighborhood.
And it's posted online as well. So it, it is probably available.
Hey, Anthony, this is Andy. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Hey, sorry, I can't be with you guys in person tonight. Um, but I think I heard Aaron recommend uh bringing on board a. Uh, city designated engineer uh to assist in the review. Um, and, and if that, and if that's the case, I think you're going to want to do a formal resolution of board members. Um, authorizing the city engineer to do that. Uh, just so we have a resolution in place.
I thank you, Andy. So uh, I'll move that we. Uh, formally pass a resolution authorizing the city engineer to, to consult or obtain a, an outside engineer for consultation.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, Barbara Higbee? Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion carries. And uh, I guess unless there's any other decisions, we'll adjourn this to the uh table this item to the May eighteenth agenda.
Does that require a motion?
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm moving for that. So.
I'm second.
All those in favor, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so.
One last motion.
We have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? I.
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Good night.